For April 21st at 6:30 PM, sent 31 to order. And I guess in order to determine a quorum. I'm here, that's John Jones. And then go down the list, whoever else is online.
Okay.
It looks like.
Yeah, I'll do a roll call in the order of this list so that not everyone is saying yeah at the same time. Okay, so. Okay, Chris Smith, are you here?
Paul Caffey, he was here.
Okay, that's fine.
And say Mark, are you still there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
So we just missing Michael.
Missing Michael and then, and uh.
I was on mute for the record, my bad.
Mark Lee's.
Yeah, sorry, Mark, Mark Lee's, yeah. So, uh, when the, when the meeting starts, we might want to remind everybody to mute their phones so we don't get any feedback.
John, I'm here, just so you know.
Okay. And Barbie, I guess, are we ready to begin?
Um, who was, who was that, was that?
Yeah, that was me Barbie.
Okay. Okay, so the only person that we don't have on the call yet is Michael.
Is there?
He's there now?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I see Michael, yep.
Alright.
He must not be on the phone.
Yeah, Michael, can you hear, can you give your name?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Here is that we have all members of the planning board in attendance. And assume everybody has reviewed the agenda as presented. Are there any comments or changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, um. What we're gonna need to do now, when we make.
Did I hear none for the agenda?
No.
No changes for the agenda?
That's what I, so I was getting ready to say Barbie, we're gonna have to, whenever we make a motion, we're gonna have to say yes, so that you know who it is.
Yes, yes, please do, thank you.
Alright, I will go on and make the motion to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor, uh, I guess we just, do we need to identify as we go Barbie for you?
Yes, yeah, I'll probably know what, what your name, uh, you know, your voice is. But if you would just for the record, go ahead and state your name and who's second.
Or would it be better for me to just call them out and have them vote, how's that, would that be better for you?
Um, only if, I would prefer if the one who's making the motion to do their name instead of, instead of you, so that we know who actually did the motion.
Alright, well, I made that motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay, I got that.
Okay.
You got a second?
We need someone to second.
Kelly, Kelly Case will second.
Okay, okay, now time for a vote?
Time for a vote, let's, uh, I'm gonna go down what I read here as far as call-ins. Uh, Chris, Chris Smith? Would you unmute and, and, uh?
Just say yes or no?
Yes or no?
This is working great.
Alright.
Always positive.
Alright, if I have at least a quorum, if someone would just, if you all will just pass, if I have at least, um. Let's see, you've got six now, if I have at least three people that, that I hear that, um.
Mark Peterson votes yes, Mark Peterson votes yes.
Alright, and was that Kelly that voted yes?
Kelly said, but I'll vote yes as well.
Alright, and, uh.
I vote yes as well, John.
Now, this is Paul, I will vote yes.
Okay, Barbie, that gives you at least three.
Yes, yes, okay, so we move on to the minutes.
Okay, if anybody's got anything to help me here, hey, I'll run with it, alright? Adoption, adoption of the minute, meeting minutes for 218 and 39. Uh, that, the 39 was a joint meeting with the council. Uh, has anyone got on either one, do we need to discuss them individually?
Yes, you'll need to discuss individually if you have, um.
Okay.
And you'll have, but you can, you can vote, um, to accept them as together, but if you have changes, we need to take those individually.
Okay, let me open for the 218 meeting, any changes to the minutes? Uh, hearing none.
Alright.
Uh, the 39 meeting, joint meeting with council, any changes to those minutes? Hearing none, would someone make a motion to accept them, uh, together?
I'll make that motion, Mark Peterson, move that.
Very good, uh.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I think Paul was getting ready to make the motion and then I heard Mark, so which one's gonna make the motion? I can put both of you to lie, but.
Just put, put Paul.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a second.
Second it.
Who is that?
I, Mark.
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 All in.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, okay, uh. Or is anyone there for public comment?
I, I had, um, I had no one to call me to sign up for public comment, nor did I have anyone send me anything by email.
Um, no, nobody is here in person, but we do have TJ Filbrick on the WebEx. So, maybe you'd like to open up to him if he wants to make a public comment.
Oh, okay. Uh, I've got nothing. Okay, that was Mr. Filbrick. Yeah, me.
Okay.
So I'll close the period. Uh, first item on, uh, items of discussion. An election of auto. So, says Barbie, you gonna handle that?
I can, um, I'd like to, um, open the floor for nominations for chair, uh, chair at this time, do I have any nominations for that?
I'd like to nominate John Jones to continue as chairperson.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready for someone else to put their name in there too.
Christopher, is that my nomination, like Keith?
Oh, no, can I decline the nomination?
Uh, yeah, you, you can decline that nomination if you prefer.
Yeah, I don't.
I'll nominate John Jones.
Okay, do I have any other nomination?
I nominate John Jones.
Okay. Any other nomination?
I nominate Kelly for vice chair.
Well, we haven't got the vice chair yet. We're only doing one at a time, so. Okay, so I don't have any more nominations for chair? Alright, um. We'll close the floor for nominations, now we'll, um. We'll, we'll have to do this by procedural, so if someone wants to give me, we have John Jones nominated for chair. Um, can I have the motion for someone to, um, make that official?
I'll move to make it official.
Okay, so, Mark makes a motion to, uh, to nominate, uh, John Jones as, as presented? Any second?
I'll second it, this is Michael.
Okay, and, uh, vote?
If you wanna go down the list, again Barbie or what?
If, if they'll just say, um, yes, that's fine.
Alright, I'm just looking at the list they appear for me, you know, on the, the call-in.
I vote yes.
Okay.
Kelly votes yes.
Okay.
Chris, uh, are you voting?
No.
So, so you're, you're a no?
I'm not voting.
Oh. Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so, um, well, um. The motion passes with, uh, with all, uh, voting except for Chris. Um, so, well, um, John Jones, your chair for another year?
Thank you ma'am.
Can I open the, can I open the floor for vice chair?
I'll nominate Mark Peterson for vice chair again.
Okay, any more nomination?
If Mark is, uh, if Mark wants to relinquish his title, I'm happy to step in.
Kelly, do you want it, I'd be glad to nominate him both of you to do.
Um, I'm happy to do it, I just, I just couldn't, I can't do chair, I don't have a man with, but I could, I could do vice chair.
Yeah, I've got, I've taken on some more things that are gonna get busier for me and more travel probably, so I would probably. Like stay on as a member, but it probably makes sense if that's somebody else's vice chair.
Okay, do we want to decline the nomination for vice chair?
Sure.
Okay.
I was ten my nomination for Mark then.
Okay. Well, I think, I think Mark declined, so are you declining the nomination, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, so we just have Kelly to, as, as vice chair unless someone else wants to be nominated. Okay, hearing none, I will close the floor for nominations of vice chair. Uh, may I have a motion to, um, to accept Kelly Case as, uh, as a vice chair?
I'll second it.
Someone wanna make the motion?
I'll make a motion for Kelly Case to be vice chair, this is Michael.
And this is Paul, I will second.
Okay. Alright, now, um, all in favor?
This, aye.
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 John is aye.
Alright, I think we're done.
Okay.
Congratulations, I'll make such a.
Congratulations Kelly.
They're a party.
Okay, uh, next item for discussion, uh, is Marvin Gardens' parcel subdivision final plat, Rohit?
Alright, um, this is very simple, the Marvin Gardens', uh, plot has four out parcels. And they're now officially subdividing the one parcel into four parcels, which is, uh, at the northwest corner of the lot. And the plats that you have are like upside down, down is, uh, north. So if you're looking at it and struggling to get orientation, that's why. Um, so this is very straightforward, they submitted a subdivision for that, uh, lot at the corner for four parcels that matches the zoning. The original zoning that I also included in the packet, which is right after the subdivision plat. Um, so I have no comments other than to recommend approval.
Uh, okay.
But I'm, I'm available to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions anyone has?
Rohit, this is Paul, so, so there are no changes being proposed at all, it's just a matter of sort of formalized? I think something that was already more or less approved?
Right, the zoning document shows four out parcels and, uh, they're just actually applying for the subdivision of that, uh, that lot into four lots.
And?
Yeah, go ahead.
And Rohit, the, the beats and bounds or the, the square footage is best as per?
Yeah, yeah, exactly the same.
What, what is that, um, section between out parcel three and out parcel four, what does that represent?
That's gonna be a road, an access road. There's gonna be another access road on the left of, or the left of out parcel one, I guess it's upside down, so on the outsides of these out parcels and the one in the middle.
So there's going to be an, an entrance onto Providence Road between parcel three and four?
Yeah, that's what I see here.
Uh, okay, that's gotta be new, I don't think we had something like that.
Well, now, if you look in the, uh, original zoning document, which is, which is following, it's the one with Regency Centers on it, you'll see that is also represented there.
So I knew we had two entrances on the, what is Newtown Road, the north side, right? There was, in theory, out parcel one was perhaps gonna be a gas station.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the road coming in from, on the left off Newtown was going to access, um. The, the, uh, community to, uh, you know, the, the, the mixed use, not the mixed use, the, the home community and, and, uh, Publix. And then there was gonna be one other access point, which was going to be where there, that little maybe pocket park kinda thing was gonna be developed.
Right.
Up there on Providence Road, I'm, I'm fairly certain there wasn't a second entrance off of Providence.
Paul, or Rohit, I'm looking at the Regency drawing. And I'm trying, I'm trying to blow it up as much as I can here.
Mm-hmm, I'm gonna share my screen in a second, but, uh.
I'm not sure whether it's a drive, or, or is it just a, a, uh, a driveway between parcels, was that three and four?
Yeah, that's what it's showing in the original zoning document.
Not all the way to Providence Road, but just between the two parcels.
Hmm, no, I'm seeing that it goes all the way between the, the main drive aisle and to Providence Road. Thought I loaded this up, actually, this is taking a little while, but I'll show you on, uh, the screen share once this pulls up.
Well, I, I'm, I've got the, the packet on my laptop and I'm communicating on my phone, but. I don't know whether that's the right way to do it, it's.
Well, um, if you're, if you're screen sharing or maybe even just videotaping your, your desktop, then we could see it, but I don't see anything from you right now.
No, I, I just, I, I've got email up on my, on my laptop.
Okay, let's see.
You know, looking back, it, it was emailed out.
I've got it pulled up now, so, um, let's see, if you, if you can see my, uh, my desktop screen. Let's see. Somewhere else, um, let's see. Can everyone see my desktop screen, is that, uh?
Yeah.
Is that happening, okay, so then you can.
What I'm doing here.
Okay.
All I see is here.
So it's a right in, right out?
Yeah, this, this looks like, uh, it has, uh, in and out, it probably is right in, right out. Um, but it is here as a, you know, a two-way access driveway in the original zoning.
You know what, I, I remember some conversation Paul somewhere, of course I wasn't in the original rezoning, but I remember some conversation about a right in, right out. And then the one, uh.
Yeah, John, I, I certainly remember that conversation too, but I thought it was the one at, down on Newtown Road. Which was outside by parcel one.
Oh, yeah, here. This looks like it has a left turn lane as well, actually, so the one on Newtown Road doesn't seem to be right in, right out only. Um, it has a left turn lane on Newtown Road turning into, uh, that driveway here. But the one up, uh, that you're talking about on Providence Road does not have a left turn lane in. So that could be, uh, and it has a, it has one of those triangle medians that shows, that shows that you can't, uh, turn into it, uh, turning left.
That whole road is gonna be right in, right out, the whole strip, so why would they, why would they do anything but right in, right out?
Right, right.
Is, is the, uh, southernmost driveway, which would be south of parcel four, I guess it is?
Yeah.
Is that where they have the right from DOT to put a light in?
Yes, that's where they're putting a traffic light, that's correct.
Which would, would go away with the, the road and with.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Rohit, what are those markings mean? On the entry, right where your cursor is, what, what are those, what does that mean?
The dashed lines?
Yeah, those black dashes?
Mm-hmm. These just seem to be outlining the parcels. The parks a parcel, these out parcels are each a parcel.
That, okay.
Yeah.
Or is it, or is it outlining parking?
No, 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 there's not gonna, there's not gonna be on-street parking like that, whoops, went too far, there's not gonna be on-street parking like that.
So, what's the difference between the long dashes and the short, which is like some sort of crazy Morse code?
Um, let's see.
Are you talking to Kelly or, or Paul or Kelly both or whoever? On the subdivision? Uh, are you talking about, let's look at, parcel two is the one that's got the real funky looking lines on the. Uh, is it stormwater easement?
No, they, they all look like just the boundaries, because the, uh, the park has similar lines. The road in the subdivision has, the neighborhood has similar lines. Um, it seems to me that they're just the lines for the, the, the lot borders and the right of way.
The one I'm looking at, I can, it references L 106 and L 107 and L.
Those are, those are the surveyed, uh, lot lines. You can find it, you can find it in the table on, uh. Sheet three, they're just the survey line. If I, at least if I think you're talking about the correct thing. Yeah, those are the surveyed lines for the easements. I think Kelly's talking about the thick dashed lines on the, uh, original zoning, and those, I can't see anything, I can't see them being anything but the, uh, lot boundaries.
On, on the, okay, alright, that was misunderstanding, I thought.
Okay, so are there any other questions or concerns?
Well, actually, the question was, is this, whoever is was on Regent approval as well?
Uh, yes, that's, see, that, that goes back to the original question about this driveway, and it is here in the, uh, original zoning. So, uh, with that answered, it does match exactly what, uh, was approved in the original zoning.
Now, the parcel that is south of the southern part. And is in their lot one, the property of Publix.
Right.
Was, that's not really, once again, looking at something that was, I wasn't part of it, I thought that village is part property.
Yes, yes, that lot one is not related to the subdivision, that is the park that you're thinking about. And that would be dedicated to the village of Marvin when they're done, but that hasn't happened yet.
Okay. But they're obligated to do that in, in future as well?
Yes, yes, that is, uh, that is part of the, the original zoning, that, uh, they would make it, uh, probably just as a minimal but, um, good-looking park. And then, uh, that they would transfer that lot over to our ownership.
Okay. So they're actually supposed to improve it in some manner and then give it to us?
Yeah, the original plan I show has, uh, uh, a little sidewalk and a, a couple of parking spaces on it.
Uh-huh.
I'm not entirely sure if, uh, off the top of my head whether they're, whether they're supposed to build that or us, but, uh, I can look that up. It's probably in the agreement.
Any other comments, questions, uh, from anybody? Silence, uh, it was just, this just an approval on our part, I mean, Barbie?
Yeah, this is, this is like a normal subdivision final plat, um, sort of, sort of normal. Except for that you already have a zoning document to reference off of, so it's not really a hard decision. So they're at the final plat step of this subdivision, and so they have to get an approval from planning board or, or recommendation from planning board and then approval from council to go ahead with it.
Okay. Open for, uh, I'm up. No one want to make a motion to accept or reject or anything?
Does Chris move to accept the plans as presented?
I didn't quite understand you, Chris.
He said he moved to.
Now we had it.
Um, in, in the motion, can we also say that, uh, the planning board recommends this for council?
Move to accept the plans as presented for moving to the council to review and, and what?
Okay, uh, is second? Chris, motion?
I'll second.
Okay, that was Kelly?
Yes.
Aye. Me first question? Alright, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 This is Michael, aye.
John's aye.
Paul's aye.
Okay. I'm like, motion carries? Alright. Uh, update on the land use plan, Bill. Uh, update on the land use plan village center?
Okay, um, I just wanted to quickly go over the schedule and uh, kind of just note that I did have a little bit of a buffer in the schedule last time I presented it to you, so even though we kind of missed a meeting uh, last ti- last month, it, it will still be a similar timeframe. Um, also, one uh, little bit of a development is that Christina has expressed that she doesn't really want to submit the land use plan to the council in uh, in pieces and she would prefer to submit it all at once. So um, so the timeline just represents uh, that uh, at this meeting, we'll talk about the land use plan text up to chapter five in the future land use map. Um, May 19th, that's the next meeting, we're gonna flesh out the village center and related sections. June 16th, we'll have our growth model from COG, so we can talk about the comp plan and July 21st is when we would be able to wrap everything up with all the comments. And uh, in August, it looks like we'll be able to uh, submit it to the council and get feedback and start bouncing it back and forth. Um, so the timeline is roughly the same, that we'll have this uh, wrapped up and ready for like final uh, submission in August after a council comments. And so I just wanted to update you guys and see if you had any comments on that schedule.
So, so when this would be 100% complete before it goes to council, including the, the uh, the uh, the comp plan, which due to the land use plan, is that right?
Right, so the, everything that has to do with the, the comp plan and the village center, uh, we're, we're kind of gonna work those out simultaneously to the land use plan and then have it all done in about four months.
Uh, Rohit, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Can I ask a quick fine question, um, on the, the timing for council? Uh, when were you gonna present it to council? Were you gonna give it to them at the work session? In July for them to uh, make a decision for planning board to get their comments on the 18th? Because the 18th is actually planning board's meeting.
Yeah, so July 21st is planning board's meeting and then we could put it to council at that work session and then come back at the next planning board meeting with council's comments. That was my idea.
Okay, well, wouldn't we, couldn't it be best to put um, the work session?
Sure, I see what you're saying.
Let planning board know that's when it's gonna go to council?
Sure, let me check the date on that. I'll add it to the timeline here.
The, the work session would be July 30th?
Oh, thanks. Okay, that's, that's enough time. Um, I think for internally to get it from planning board to council.
Which means you'll have to, um, they'll have to have it for that meeting, um, on the 24th?
Yeah, that's fine, I think I could pull that off, I mean.
So, so you, you know that uh, that needs to be completed for them to get in their packet on the 24th, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
I just wanted to make sure we were clear on the, the timing of that.
So Rohit?
Yeah.
This, this is Kelly, um, I'm seeing that the, the entire conversation village center district is happening in one meeting, is that realistic?
Um, I actually said, I made a mem, uh, like a note on the bottom, I don't expect you to make all the decisions in the uh, sections um, at that meeting and if you, if you feel like you need to extend or um, delay to have a public input meeting, it's fine. Um, this is kind of like the, the best, like best case timeline, but it, if, if it's your decision that you want to uh, extend it, um, to have more, you know, time to think about things, then uh, it's perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, there's no deadlines, um, that's, that's another thing, I think, there's, there's no like, real deadline to put this out, it's just that John Jones uh, was asking me, you know, put a, put a timeline together on how like, if everything goes like perfectly, when can we have this like, land use plan done by? And this is it.
So what, so I, I understand Christina's, you know, wish to have it, you know, a complete document to give council. Um, are they really gonna be able to deal with all of it at one time? Like, why couldn't we just go ahead and submit one through five and have them start going through it? And to give us more time to deal with um, the village central district?
Well, that's what I thought as well and John had this conversation with Christina, so I'll let him answer the question.
Well, yeah, yeah, Rohit and I discussed because, you know, I, I think this, and Bob made, you know, of course Bob's new, he like been around this land use plan as long as he been. And uh, you know, and I am some relative newcomer, like, planning board have.
John, you're breaking up.
Uh, okay, I'm sorry. I see, I, I see, yeah, I, I agree, I thought that they needed, you know, as much time as possible amongst the council for conversation. And what we saw was that, that, you know, we may not have the final map drawn, we may not have the final photographs in there. You know, give them the text so that they can have time to start. You, you know, you know how long it's taken us to go through the text?
Yeah.
You know, and the, the maps and the photos and all this other stuff. You know, that's just sort of, you know, that, that's just icing on the cake, but the, the text is what they really need. And that's what I suggested to Christina and I was a little surprised that she did not want to do that. You know, we were just trying to, to move it, you know, to expedite it the best we could. Instead of having, you know, all of the, the uh, the, the cherry on top when, you know, before it goes to them.
Did she give you a reason or did, did, did that conversation not flesh out?
Uh, no, she just thought that it ought to be 100% complete.
Sure.
Never got anything other than that from her.
Well, it's.
I think that the direction from council that they wanted the, the complete land use plan and that they would work on it in their work session meetings.
Uh-huh.
That's what I thought at first, I think, but that was the direction from council.
Oh, it was?
So I, I just, my concern is, is that, you know, we put, we put the village center district off because it was so um, you know, heavy in terms of decisions we had to make and the discussions we had to have. And um, you know, just the, the kind of divide that our community has. And I'm just worried that now, that, you know, we, we pushed to get one through five done and now we're going to rush through like the most important, one of the most important pieces. Um, so that's my concern is that now we're back under pressure to get this done instead of giving it really thoughtful, meaningful conversation and planning.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, you can uh, we can have these village center conversations in the subsequent meetings as well. Um, like the June 16th and July 21st meetings can also include the discussions of village center in, as well as the other things that are on the schedule for those days. So that you don't have to feel like you have to wrap up the village center in one meeting. How's that?
Alright, let's, let's play it by ear first.
Sure.
Just that, you know, it, it uh, you know, you know, I guess the goal would be to have the complete, you know, and on uh, the July 21st, so we've got May, June and July, really, we've got three month, uh, meetings, and there's also on the agenda, I don't know, now, like you say, we've got three meetings to, to work on that.
Yeah, and like I said, you can extend it if you want, this is uh, this is a guide, not a, a rule.
Okay.
So my, my other.
But you can also have a special meeting to, to do whatever you want to for the village center district?
That's, that's true as well.
You don't have to, you don't have to do it all on the 19th.
Yes.
You know, that you need to have a second meeting for just that particular topic, then um, then, then you can, can have a, a special meeting, yeah, for that.
And I also have to add, so that's an option and you can also hold a public input meeting which is uh, it's not a special meeting, it's just one of those things that the public is invited and there may or may not be a quorum of planning board members. But uh, those, those types of meetings don't have to be held at the, the scheduled planning board day as well, so that can be an in-between day to, to also, you know, get the public's opinion and uh, also start, also flesh out the, the village center.
But the public involvement meetings are a special meeting.
Oh, they are a special meeting? Okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
So, uh, this is kind of the elephant in the room, but um, I mean, we're in the middle of a pandemic and we're, we're not even to the bad part yet, so um, uh, so I don't really see how to have a public, public meeting on webex, um, there are many people who don't, you know, have this kind of access or are not familiar with technology, so I think it's, um, you know, we would almost need to wait until the public could actually come in and see.
Absolutely.
Or if there's another alternative, but um, you know, I think we, we just, I don't know, um, I, I would be very, very concerned that things would move on and the whole, like if the whole planning board couldn't be on the calls or vote and things were to be moved through if someone couldn't make it because of illness, you know, whatever it is, um. Yeah, this is just, this is just a tough subject and, cause it's just very contentious to all the public, so. Just, we need to be very careful.
Could I, could I make a, a, a great suggestion then, based on this timeline? We, um, we could go ahead and present the timeline to council and get their input as to whether or not the timing um, is, is, is good for them. They may even, with, with the pandemic that, the way it is, um, and, and all, they may consider moving it on out to, to September. Um, and in that way, that will alleviate um, some kind of, of stress based on, on what the timeline currently is, is suggesting. So maybe put this on their, um, on their, their meeting schedule either on the 12th or at their work session and let them see what, um, could be, stay a realistic for them.
Yeah, I don't wanna just, you know, this thing is drug on top of him and, and I understand Kelly's point that, you know, we're down to the real, real, real meat of the thing now, and we don't wanna rush it, but we also don't want to add so much, so much uh, fluff time in it that it's, it's, we're talking about the land use plan of 2021.
I, I don't think that's, I don't think anyone's suggesting that, John, I think it's just, let's not, let's not rush it and let's.
I, I understand, but, you know, we can always add more time, you know, if we don't make it, but let's don't put the additional time in upfront unless the council comes back and say, hey, put some more time in for us.
Yeah, I, I wasn't suggesting adding time, just suggesting that we need to tread carefully.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that.
It might be that we get into this meeting and everything, everyone agrees and we just move forward, you know? Who knows, but we, we have to, this is, this is kind of like the congressional, like you represent your district and, you know, we have to be looking out for all public's interest and, so.
Absolutely, and all, that's also why I think there should be a public input meeting and also, as you said, it should not be until we're out of the woods with this uh, this virus, so uh, we'll have to play it by year, but this, the schedule is just to say that, you know, here are the sections left and here, here's the, kind of the timeframe we're looking at right now, we can always add time, as you said, play it by year.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Okay. Alright, if there are no more comments, we can move on, this item did not need any uh, discuss, uh, vote, votes or anything, it's just an update.
Alright, then uh, so we're gonna, you know, go with the timeline as we've got it right this month with the knowledge that, you know, may need to be shifted.
Right.
Let's just, yeah, alright, next item on the agenda, discussion of calling a special meeting to discuss the code reorganization and revi-
Okay, so speaking of special meetings, uh, we do have a code reorganization project underway and um, it did occur to me now that since there are gonna be a few uh, revisions, uh, the planning board does need to see all uh, revisions to zoning code. And so since we've got a kind of busy schedule going forward, uh, regarding the land use plan, I wanted to propose uh, that we uh, we have a special meeting to discuss just the uh, set of revisions that will be brought both by uh, myself and by the consultant. Um, the, there's a small list and there could be more added to it when we get to the point. Um, but uh, I just wanted to see if there is a, that there's a taste for having this being discussed at a separate meeting or uh, should I just put it on the next meeting's agenda?
Well, how, how far along are they with, you know, the, the consultant?
Um, so they're kind of just getting started, but they also um, have kind of a deadline of June 30th because the, the project is budgeted in this fiscal year. Uh, so, we, we do need to get these uh, these revisions approved uh, or for, recommended for approval or not by uh, well, as soon as possible.
Rohit, is it um, is it enough for an entire meeting or is it, you know, if it's only a few revisions, is it something you could send us by email? We could review and then, you know, quickly discuss and approve or make alterations at the next meeting?
Um, I think if you were to review it beforehand, it would, it would take a lot less time. Most of the big things are things that we've discussed already. Um, and there are several small things that um, that are revisions enough, I've thought that needed to be looked at. Um, and then there's various typos and stuff, but I won't be bringing that to you, it's just uh, kind of revisions that I'm bringing, so I think it's possible, yes, if you wanted to review it beforehand, that we could put it in a meeting with uh, with other things in it.
Well, if it would save you some time to be able to explain it verbally to us instead of having to type explanations out, I, I'd be fine with uh, doing an extra meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, is there big revisions, are these just regular revisions or is this got to do with the state's revision as well? I, I, I can't remember now.
Um, there is gonna be, there is gonna be both. Um, most of the revisions have to do with uh, just kind of, kind of grouping up a lot of the things that we've been discussing over the last year or more and uh, that haven't been codified yet, as well as things that would come up because we're reorganizing the whole planning and zoning section, sections. Um, and, and so there is a, there's a bit of both to answer your question.
Roh, Rohit, this is Paul, can I make a suggestion then is, could you do a presentation at A needed? Where you walk us through the proposed changes and sort of just give us the landscape, why you're moving things around, why you're thinking where it's even being inserted and so on? That'll give us an understanding what we're dealing with and then we can decide whether we need a separate meeting to go, go into the details or whether we can cover it in a, in a current meeting, you know, in a, in a existing meeting.
Okay, um, you want me to give you that right now? Um, like a going through of why we're doing this?
Um, no, I, I'm thinking what you need to do is sort of prepare a specific, why are we changing these various definitions? Why are we changing this setback reg and so on? I'm thinking it's gonna need to be a little more specific than just we're redoing the regs because they need some fixing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think maybe uh, so we, you know, there are, you know, six changes, are there 110 changes or, or 27 changes, you know, so we have some idea of how much time we think, you know, I, I think.
Okay.
So, thank you, Paul.
I see what you're saying. So if you're asking me if I- So if you're asking me if I, so for right now, we can not make a decision, but if I get back to you with an email sometime this week saying, uh, just fleshing out what these revisions are and how much discussion time would be needed for them, then you can uh, regroup and see if you need to call a special meeting?
When do you think the actual text will be available to review?
Um, let me think. The thing, the, I could get the ones that I know of by the end of this week, but then there, I know that as the consultant works on this project, there are going to be more that come up. So there's going to need to be a little bit of time in between when I get all of the texts of all of the changes and the actual meeting that we review these changes.
Yeah, I think we're a little early here, you know? Can I suggest something since y'all are talking about setting a meeting? Um, if the, if the recommendation from, from Paul is to um, to see what, what it is that needs to be changed in the ordinances and asking you to, to make that synopsis of it, then why don't um, you consider a special meeting for that particular presentation? And then once you've fleshed all of that out, then at the next consecutive meeting that you have, you all can go through the changes that need to be made. Um, that might be a, a good way to um, to alleviate some of it. You have a special meeting just for that particular to flush out what needs to be changed in or in ordinances.
That sounds like, that's the easy part is that discussion of these are the changes that will be made and then, then we have to get into the trouble. Am I wrong there?
Um, I think you got a point, John, uh, that the, yeah, the easy part is to tell you what these changes are and then the hard part is to actually discuss them.
Yeah, I can see discussing, you know, this is all the things you're going to need to talk about at a regular meeting and then, and then we decide, yeah, we need, we need more time, so let's call it a special meeting.
Yeah, I mean personally, I'll be surprised if we could do this at a regular meeting, right? When I say this, I mean to go through the actual language that's being proposed. I wouldn't be surprised if we could do that if there's more than just a couple of changes. It sounds like there's going to be more than just a couple, it sounds like, at least several and maybe many.
Yeah.
I do think we're probably talking about a couple of hours of discussion, you know, likely. And, you know, can we squeeze that into a regular meeting? Perhaps, but I, I don't think we want tech to be frantic.
Yeah, yeah, I agree Paul, yeah. Just, just think about our conversation about what is a dwelling. You know, that was just one thing. So I, I see us, you know, covering, this is everything we're going to need to talk about at a regular meeting and then have a special meeting to actually have the conversation.
Uh, Rohit, kind of along what Paul was initially saying, um, it might be helpful if, when you send that email to us, not even necessarily giving us, I mean, it'd be great if we could go ahead and get a preview of what's being changed, but if you categorize them as, you know, these three are being changed simply to, you know, there were text errors or, um, you know, this one is being, I know there were, I know there have been errors, but text errors in, in them and I know you said you just wanted to clean it up. So that's different than like changing the meaning of one. Um, but I know that, you know, the rearranging of, you know, there's like two that need to be rearranged because of X. You know, they're in the wrong place, they, um, something like that I think would be helpful.
Yeah, I, I've actually done that for the consultant with these changes, so I can, I can do that for you too. I see what you, I, I think I get what you're saying. Basically to just group the uh, the revisions into, we're doing this because we need a revision of this rule or we're doing this because there is a ambiguity or we're doing this because there's a typo, uh, that kind of categorization, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so.
So what's the consensus about a special meeting then? Should we wait until I give a email to decide? Or do you want to set a special meeting and then just see if we need it or not?
I, I don't think you, you're ready to schedule a special meeting.
Okay.
Because, you know, you know a handful of things, but the consultant's a long way from finished, it sounds like. So, you know, until we know the full scope of it, but, and, and I would rather not have it pieced up. I'm starting to sound like.
Like.
I know, but.
Well, John, how, how much you changed?
Now, my, my conversation with that was, yeah, there's all of the texts, it's just not pretty yet. And this is, I won't say all of the texts at one time, I think, when we get to that. We, we need a special meeting.
Did you mention Rohit, that the consultant is contracted through June 30th?
Um, that's correct. Right now, we don't really have a way to extend that deadline, but uh, because of this virus, we are having some delays and so we're going to look into seeing if we can extend that deadline. But right now, um, right now, we don't have anything except to say that it is until June 30th.
Okay, so I, you know, obviously in any project and plan, if you want to deliver on June 30th, you got to work backwards from there and get a time to properly review. So, you know, if this stuff isn't, say, in our hands on June 1st, I think it will be tough.
Right.
Well, what is the, I mean, you, we just have the consultant until the end of June. That just means they're going to do their job and rewrite. I mean, that doesn't mean that we have to have them decided and approved by then, correct Rohit?
Um, that, that is correct. I can see if, uh, if we don't finish the project, then, then we might have it in a place that we could do it in-house. Um, but let's try to use that as only a backup idea and try to have it actually do, have them finish it by then. But I do see what you're saying.
I would think we would want to be able to balance our suggestions, recommendations off our consultants so that they can then respond and say, well, we chose this because X. You guys are saying Y. We hear you, but have you thought about this, right? I mean, I would envision a little backup work between us.
Right.
When do you, when do you expect them Rohit, to have um, kind of their fir, their, their final report, final draft, final alterations?
Um, hopefully by the last, I mean, the second, the last or last week of June, that's uh, uh, the, the, these revisions also have to go through council. Um, so like Paul said, we got to work backwards. Um, at the latest, at their June 25th workshop, uh, that's when they need to be seen.
So you're saying the consultant is not going to have his initial report to us until the end of June?
No, 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 the final report, the final product is what Kelly asked. Uh, the initial report is going to be at least a month, a month and a half before that. So mid, by the next planning board meeting, I can imagine that they would have enough to give you their, like, rough draft.
Okay, well then that's, that's when we know what we've got to work, what we've got to do.
What do you think?
Yeah, I, I, I can see this coming to the discussion at the next meeting. We can, we can look at what we've got and then see if we need to call a special meeting or do it at that meeting. Okay.
Yeah.
That works.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Uh, closing off, the discussion of the land use plan.
All right, so before we dive into this, I do want to uh, put to your attention that I included in the packet, the um, like the memos packet, the comments on uh, section F, uh, 5F that PRG gave in their meeting, uh, two meetings ago. So they didn't have much to say. They did want to keep pretty much all of it except for the, the part about uh, mayors. And uh, and you can see just the, like slight comments they made and compare it to the current draft, which is also in your possession somewhere.
Yeah.
So that's all I have to say. Um, we are somewhere in section H right now. Um, and uh, someone could find exactly which line we're at would be helpful. Or we could just start from the top of section H because we were kind of doing it rushed for the reason of trying to finish it by that meeting and then decided not to rush it.
Yeah, back here on, uh, this is for section A, transportation roadways, traffic management policies and goals.
Yeah.
And river, yeah.
So we were somewhere in that section and then decided to cut time. So I, I guess before jumping into it, do you guys want to review PRG's comments? Or uh, do you just want to leave it to them? They really just had a few comments.
Yeah, they're, they're like, well, actually, it's a little hard to understand. At least in their section, they have 1.100.
Okay. So they just added, which, which is the last line you can see on page 33, which is expand existing multi-use trails and continue to support Marvin's equestrian heritage and preserve open spaces. That's the last bullet in F1.
The last. This, this was pinned in there, I don't, I didn't quite get that, read that again.
Okay, um, the last bullet in the new F1, which is uh, page 33, it's.
Uh, back there, yeah.
Yeah, you can, you can, you, you all should have the actual land use plan, the, like the current version of it as well as sent it out in a Word document. Um, it's not, it might not be in the packet. Sorry, my camera's actually really ugly.
Separate.
Yeah, it's just. It's a sep, a separate email that I sent with the land use plan itself. Um, if we were here, I'd have copies for you all, but um, anyway. So the last bullet, I'll just read it out again, it says, expand existing multi-use trails and continue to support Marvin's equestrian heritage and preserve open spaces. Actually, there is one thing I can do, which is to flip my video here. There. Last bullet. Expand existing multi-use trails, continue to support Marvin's equestrian heritage and preserve open spaces. If I zoom out, can you still see it? Yeah, sort of. Quality's not great, but. That's, yeah, that's the only line that they added outright. They also deleted the line about mayors, as I said, but other than that, they just had word, word, a little bit of typo fixing.
Whose line is the first line? Because this reservation, I think it might be intended to save preservation. Identifying the currency such.
Oh, reservation? Um, that was there originally, but I think that makes sense when you think about how they want to uh, like snatch up pieces of land that are appropriate for parks, kind of like they're trying to do with uh, the trailhead above chimneys and then uh, also the, the Pulte townhome open space, trying to, trying to get that as part. Anyway, so that does seem to make sense to me.
I'm here, I'm right. So, you just wanted that reaction to the comments?
Yeah, I mean, if you, uh, I mean, this is, the land use plan overall is the planning board's product. So you guys said take it to the planning board and uh, so I did and this is what they came up with. And if you have no issues with it, then we can move on to section H.
Then we get a strong equestrian thing, uh, to the back?
Um, no, the planning board did discuss actually that they wanted to uh, reduce a little bit. Uh, I'm getting audio issues or is everyone okay? Okay, um, anyway, so they did want to reduce the uh, the verbiage of equestrian in the land use plan, not the land use plan, in their master plan, but uh, the line that they added has the word equestrian twice and they actually removed one of the instances and just called it multi-use instead. So that's how they were going about it. They wanted to include it, but not as much, so they decreased the instances of the word equestrian just to one instance. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, on out, have any conversation or, you know, PRG's input? Any changes that we want to make to it? You know, I, I think, I understand that the land use plan, that this section is, really is, is, they're basically, I think.
Right. Yeah. Deleted section eight.
So, we would accept the changes as presented and move on, as far as section L?
Wait, do we need a motion?
Um, uh, pardon?
No, motion's not necessary.
Okay.
That's, that's what they're saying, so, a motion's not necessary for them.
Okay.
I was really, I'm sorry, I was looking sort of, you know, uh, agreement that, that we go with them, you know, not necessarily a motion, but moving on.
Okay.
All right. Okay, then.
Section H?
Section H.
You might want to go, just see if we were down, I thought it was like, left.
Uh, yeah, I think we got to, like.
You got to page 38, you're at section H.11.
H.1, that's page 36 for me.
Page 38 on the uh, attachment you sent Rohit.
Oh, really? Hmm, okay, then my page, the page numbers for the one I have printed off.
Yeah.
That is, okay, I'll see what happens.
38 of 54, or I'm sorry, 38 of 54.
Okay.
Could somebody tell me the name of the file? I actually have multiple versions of this.
Okay.
Right now, and I don't know which one I'm supposed to be in. Is it 11520 or?
Uh, we're looking at like a 415 or four, probably 41520, if you have that one.
41320 is what the, what the attachment says.
Yeah, the one that you just had successfully is dated 41320. But I'm looking at page 38 of 51 as a map.
38 of 51 has a map on it? Yeah, that's what I have here too.
Yeah, I, I think we're hit correct that, um, page, it's actually 36, but when we, when we did the, uh, the meeting last week, um, the version we reduced the mayor, it was on page 38.
Mm-hmm, so.
That's what the, that's what the minutes indicate.
Okay, so I'm going to try to see.
For a version, so one page is, it probably took out a page in order for the page numbers to, uh, to be different.
And I think that, I'll, I'll have to make sure about what pages I did take out just to make sure nothing uh, nothing got deleted by accident.
Because then that means, that means based on the minutes, well, I can correct the minutes because if this version of the land use plan is not correct, because you're not starting on page, um, uh, page 38, you're actually starting on page 33.
Okay, I'll, I'll go back. It's possible that we did decide to delete pages, um, but I'll go back and make sure.
So it sounds like we need to go over the, our section. So it sounds like we need to go over the, our second one.
Maybe that'd be better for, you know, just recollection's sake. It's been a while.
Okay. I have my notes on it myself. Any comments?
Are we, are we on page thirty-eight of fifty-four? Is that what we're starting with?
Um, if you have thirty-eight of fifty-four, that's, that's fine. If you have page thirty-six of fifty-two, that's also fine.
But I mean, it's the, uh...
When we started with Section A, then what you represented in A, then what your version, that's where we're starting.
Transportation Roadways Traffic Management Policies, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, I'm with you.
Rohit, did you make the changes, the couple that we did do the last time we met, did you make those changes in this version?
I did, I did. So this does reflect whatever we did discuss at the end of the last meeting that we discussed this.
Sure.
So there may not be too much that you find that's wrong in the first few subsections. And that's just fine.
Hey Rohit, as a person who's had some experience, I think maybe drainage should be somehow mentioned in H.1.1.
Hmm-hmm.
Uh, you know, we talk about needed repairs on streets and sidewalks. I'd also think if we, if we are responsible for it, then I think we probably ought to talk about storm drains as well.
Hmm-hmm. That's a good idea, and it could tie into a stormwater management plan that we're trying to work with the county right now on. So I could get some language from that project and insert it here. Something along, you're thinking something along the lines of, like, coordinate and maintain proper stormwater flow and, and related repairs.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, I'll include something of that language, then.
And that was in our books as well.
But, uh, let me just ask, in, in that regard, uh, we, I think it says here, implement an inspection monitoring program for village road sidewalks and street escapes. Would that, would we stick in, in drainage? In, you know, in that monitoring program, inspection and monitoring?
Um, that's a possibility as well, yeah.
But because I know that, uh, that the council had, had AMT go back and inspect, you know, the drainage systems
Right.
on these new, on the...
Yes, they did a whole curb and gutter study of all of the curb and gutter on Marvin's current and future roads, so... Um, and that includes, you know, cost estimation of what various things would cost to fix, and a schedule to fix those things, so that, that could be basically just thrown in there.
Yeah, drainage needs to be included in that, that monitoring program.
Sure. So that's actually pretty simple for me. I can just add, just delete the word "and" there, and then just put "and" stormwater drainage.
Yeah.
All right.
Would they have caught, would they have caught, um, you know, something like, uh, I know someone was talking about how Joe Carr floods at that point.
Yeah, I know, I know what you're talking about, and they would not have caught that, because they're just doing a study of roads that we have or are anticipating to have, and Joe Carr is not one of those.
Right, so is that an NCDOT thing, or is that a Marvin thing?
That's...
On Marvin's edge on, in, in NCDOT road?
Well, that's only something that we can tell NCDOT, you know, we can report to them, saying, hey, this is flooding, but I've already actually reported that specific location to NCDOT. Um, not sure if it's really relevant for the land use plan, though, because just reporting things to NCDOT, that's kind of outside of what Marvin, as the government, aims to do.
Yeah, I think the land use plan addresses things that, that we control, right?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything? Any other comments? So, so do you think, Paul, does, does this cover your, your question?
Well, if we're gonna add drainage to the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet, we should probably just also add it to the third bullet, where we talk about regular maintenance budget. I think for streets, drainage and sidewalk repairs, or something, we had putting the word drainage in there, too.
Sure, I can add it just like that.
Yep, just like that.
In fact, that is what we are doing, so that is accurate. Is my video off?
Do what?
Um, I, I, I talked to myself, sorry.
Any other comments, or are we fin- finished with, um, Section H? Does everybody think?
I don't know, it looks like we have a new member of the planning board, I'd like to see what she thinks.
I'll recheck that, I'm done with that section. I'm done.
So John, the only, the only other comment that I have is on H.2.200 parking lot design. I think we should say something in here about, um, safety and lighting.
Hmm-hmm, wait, where are you at? I don't have that kind of numbering anymore.
Okay, so, uh, you have a section called parking lot design.
Yeah, that could be H.6. I've just removed all the subsections.
Okay, so I, I just think we probably ought to say something in there in terms of parking lot design that talks about safety, in particular, you know, traffic crossing parking lots. Um, so somewhere the design has to take into account the, the traffic, and what comes to my mind is waiver, right? The parking lots in Waverly are an absolute disaster, so to me, we gotta at least have something that thinks about making sure cars aren't crossing each other at high speeds.
Hmm-hmm.
And that lighting would be another thing, where, you know, we're making the parking lots safe so that, you know, people walking in them can be seen.
Okay, let me think about how to sum that up.
Uh... It's a, uh, park, uh...
I mean, I can, again, three words, three words come to mind on safety, speeds, lighting, so I'm out of it.
Yeah, let's see, I was just trying to think, it's your, the interior lot, uh... What I'm trying to say, interior lot, uh, I just threw a blank.
All right, I, I've almost got it here. Let me just finish what I'm writing, and then I'll tell you.
Okay.
Okay, so regulate designs that produce slower driving speeds internally and prioritize pedestrian safety within and around parking lots.
Okay.
I don't have lighting in there, hold on.
How about a second bullet, in, in, ensure...
Lighting is, is separate, yeah.
And just another, another bullet, ensure adequate lighting. Adequate or appropriate lighting.
Sure, that knocks it out.
Yeah.
All right, then. That's great.
Let me know when you're ready to move on from H.6.
Um, I've written down what, um, what we just talked about, so I'm ready.
So H.7 just seems thinner.
Which?
H.7, it's called Traffic Congestion Management?
Yeah. Um, so it's just about really managing, managing the traffic that we have, and making sure that whatever we, whatever's developed doesn't cause more traffic.
Hmm-hmm. Honestly, I think that's...
Consider the impacts of density. Like, there's really nothing that says, like, you know, ensure that, you know, it just says to consider, so that's most...
I think that word could probably be changed to something like incorporate. So that you actually ask something of us, instead of just asking us to think about it. Incorporate the impacts of density and population to ensure growth does not exceed infrastructure?
Yeah, so when, when, when you say, and like, I understand what the meaning of growth does not exceed infrastructure means, but, you know, for instance, um, I'm thinking about one, one thing in particular, um, when, like, when we were talking about, uh, having one of little mom and pop shops open up right there on that main drag in Marvin on Newtown Road, and, you know, having someone trying to take a left in. If they're sitting there, like currently, what you would have to do to get, if you're coming from my neighborhood and going to the Village, the Village Hall, I would have to sit and wait and take a left to get into that parking lot. But if it's gonna be, you know, potential retail there, you know, that's something that, that's a lot more traffic, so, um, growth and infrastructure, you know, I don't know, I just don't think it's quite enough, but, you know, to be honest, I'm not also coming to, I'm not, I'm not able to give a suggestion, so I apologize for bringing that up and not being able to help.
I've got something to, to, to tackle that, if you wanna take a listen. How about assess existing and future traffic patterns in determining, uh, turning movements and internal, new internal roadways connections? Something like that. I think that's getting there, at least.
Yeah, you're getting there, definitely.
Okay, I like the first part. Assess, uh, existing and future traffic patterns, traffic flow patterns.
Would we be writing, writing requirements around this?
Um, in the case of Village Center, yes, for sure. We would be specifically targeting driveways to be right-in, right-out only, and full access, depending on where they are in relation to intersections and existing neighborhoods.
Okay.
In other cases, we might, we might defer to DOT, but still have some, some say. Like, if there's a new neighborhood going up, say Broadmoor is actually about to submit their new construction plan, and say they have a intersection that's too close to the existing intersection on Waxall Market, and we could take this land use plan and tell them, you know, look, the land use plan says to assess existing and future traffic flow, so you've either got to move that further away from the existing intersection, or you've got to make it right-in, right-out, and then they, that would act, this, this one sentence would actually hold weight.
Okay. I mean, it's just, it's another example is when the, uh, the private school was wanting to open and, um, you know, bus traffic, school traffic, all kind of combining at the same time, and people trying to get out of their neighborhood, like that was a big issue for, for folks, um, especially who didn't even live in Market.
Hmm-hmm.
I was concerned. What, um, I know that we don't do anything with bike lanes, but the cyclists, um, who use our roads, um, it's, it's a pretty bad traffic hazard, because, you know, with a bike going twenty miles to thirty miles under the speed limit, um, without a shoulder, people are just, you know, obviously crossing, crossing the line to get around them. Um, we don't really have anything in here that talks about that. And what, Rohit, was that? Did you want to talk about you guys going after a grant for, for bike lane?
Um, we're, we're approaching several different, uh, different ways to get grants. We're, we're looking at NCDOT grants, we're also looking at CRTPO funding for this, it's Marvin Loop, so, yes, for sure.
So, I mean, it might even be worth something, just having an extra bullet saying that, um, you know, the village will pursue, um, opportunities to create, um, I don't know, I mean, I, I guess you could specifically say a bike lane to ease, um, to ease traffic and even accidents.
I could see that going under H.8, because those are the, those are the two agencies that I just said we're looking at getting funding from. They would look at the, the regional transportation plan and help us fund, uh, things that are on that plan, although most, pretty much, most if not all of our Greenway network plan is on the regional transportation plan. So in H.8, pursue, uh, pursue grants and other funding from, uh, from local and regional agencies to build bike lanes, or not, let's not limit it to bike lanes, let's call it bicycle and pedestrian facilities.
That works.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just really shocked that no one's been greatly injured.
Well, it's not true anymore.
Yeah, like, on bike, on a cycle, a cycle?
Oh, not on a cycle, no, not on a cycle.
Well, I, I know that my neighbor was a big biker, and he's my age or older, and, uh, he woke up in a ditch.
Oh, my gosh!
And he has no recollection of what happened.
And?
I can't even tell you exactly where it was, you know, he was just, you know, he, he used to ride a lot, he doesn't now.
Was his, was his bike mangled?
Yeah.
All right. That's a good one.
All right. Any other comments?
I actually like the first bullet in H.9. It's different enough that we can keep it from the one that we just added in H.8, but to advocate for increased state public transportation funding is a really good thing for us to include.
Yeah. For, and, and I think that, you know, you know, you're doing a much better job, I think, than, than Ben did.
Thanks. I actually joined the TCC recently. We've had the vacancy in that board for, I don't know how long, but I was surprised to find out that, uh, that, that board, which is called a Technical Coordinating Commission or something, um, and the CRTPO was just, uh, operating without, uh, without us for at least a year. Um, so that's, that's interesting. I just want to let you know that I'm on that board now.
Yeah, that's, you know, if we could improve the connection to the surrounding communities, that solved a lot of our problems.
Yeah, for sure. Oh, and I'm also... Yeah, for sure. Oh, and I'm also on a subcommittee for Waxaw's transportation plan, so that, you know, they're working on it and they want input on the Providence Road and Waxaw Marvin quarters, so, yeah, we definitely are having a lot more coordination than we have in many years with the county and our neighbors and the region.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, can I have a finish this now?
I think so. I did add, I got direction last time, the three things that I came up with in the memo, I did add them in the various locations that are appropriate, like in H4, the last bullet. That was added since the last time, so I'm happy, I'm very happy with this.
What about your book? Any comments?
Oh, I completed the sentence. I liked the first half better than the second half, but now I like both halves. For H7, assess existing and future traffic flows, flow patterns when determining allowable turning movements and new intersection locations.
Oh, that's good.
Ah, okay.
Great.
Thank you, Rohit.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Alright, we're done with the text of the land use plan, in fact. So, we now just have to go back to Section 1, which is page, it starts on page, let's see, page 5, and this was the section that was slated to get revised when everything else was done. This is the executive summary, and if you guys, if you're looking at the most updated version, you should have some red and yellow highlightings. If not, I will just try to put my camera on it, so you know where I'm at. The red highlighting's here, this one is making a reference to 160A, which will soon be 160D, so I wanted to see how you wanted to address that.
I don't see any red on mine, I just have yellow highlighted.
Uh, just yellow? You don't have red highlight on page 5, the first page of Section 1?
I don't have anything like that.
Oh, wait, on 5, yeah, at the very top, sorry.
Okay, alright.
Executive summary, well, I have-
Let's see, I have it, I, let's see.
I opened up mine in Google Docs.
Oh.
And I'm not seeing anything like that.
Okay, well, you can take a look at my video, and it might not be the greatest, but it will hopefully help you find where I'm talking about. Just on the first page of the executive summary, I wanted to ask you how you wanted to address this, because we're switching over to 160D, which has a counterpart section, but it's not gonna be active until July, I mean, January of next year. So do you want to just go ahead and just strike out whatever is gonna be invalid? And just go with that, or leave it as is, which says 160A, future 160D?
Can you add a footnote, just annotate that with a footnote?
Oh, to leave it as is with a footnote saying 160D effective,
Yeah.
160D effective Jan. 1st, okay.
That works.
2021, okay. I like that idea a lot, thank you. Just like that footnote. Okay, alright then. Yeah, good. Next comment is basically, just, let's see, the land use plan, we removed, it used to say, right there, it used to say founding inaugural land use plan, so I just removed founding, just like we did in Section 4. See, core planning policies match, now match the sections in Chapter 5. There's no real comments, just to show you that I did. Now that we've figured out the order, it's that land use plan, historical identity, then residential, then Village Center, then commercial, then F, which is parks, G, sustainability, and H, transportation, so. That's fixed from previous versions. The next page, someone have a comment about that? Okay, no? Okay, in that case, the next page, and if you don't have this yellow highlighting, you may not have the most recent version, I'm not sure how that happened. But, basically, there is a section on page 7 that says future land use designations. And I've actually gone ahead and added the future land use designations, because that was missing. It seems like it's supposed to have them, and it didn't. So I added this text here that just explains the existing zoning districts and a short description of them.
Yeah.
Alright, and then-
Wait, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
For our Marvin residential, Marvin's traditional one lot per acre maximum density housing zoning?
Hmm. Yeah, is that supposed to say minimum? Okay, let me think, yes.
One to one lot.
Yeah, yeah. I see that's supposed to say minimum. Thank you.
Yep. We'd have a very different looking Marvin.
Yeah. Good catch, good catch.
I'll go home.
Okay, residential areas incorporate after construction. Smaller lots and greater density than our Marvin zone, okay.
A strange word there, because you're describing the density, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so maximum density is one lot per acre?
Yeah, hold on.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right.
It's just, you know, I'm wondering if you could say that differently to just avoid this debate?
Yeah, yeah, okay, now you got me reconsidering. Was it correct the first time? Hold on, let me draw something.
Again, what you're talking about is the density, and the density, or maximum density is one lot per acre.
You're right, look.
What if you put maximum density first? What if you said Marvin's traditional maximum density of one lot per acre zoning?
Yeah, that seems more clear. Maximum one lot, that means you can't put more than one lot on an acre, on average, yes.
If you just switch the order, right, say Marvin's traditional maximum density of one lot per acre zoning?
Alright, thank you.
Sure.
Because we also, I mean, there are other ways that we describe it, though, as well, so, you know, people also talk about, you know, by right and one acre, you know, a minimum of one acre lots.
Yeah, it's described as a minimum one acre per lot, or maximum one lot per acre, but the practice of describing density is units per acre. So that's why I put it that way. Yeah, I've drawn a little thing for myself, like if this is an acre, the max you can have is one lot. If you tried to put more on it, you couldn't. That's, so yeah, it is maximum after all.
Yeah, it confused me when I read it, because I was like, I'm so used to hearing, you know, minimum one lot per acre instead of-
Minimum one acre per lot, yeah.
One acre per lot, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, alright, alright. I could see where, yeah, I could see where that happened. So now I'm totally clear. I had a moment of doubt, doubting myself, but there we go, okay. I think everything else seems to be straightforward. It's ICDs, we have 3, commercial quarters, commercial development, and then ETJ districts, that we will discuss later. We'll discuss in the future land use map. Let's see, so are there any more comments about that section? Okay, and then the next section, supplemental recommendations. I've just made some edits based on the discussions and the policy priorities. And so if you can see the, let's see, you can see the highlighted sections here on my camera, if you don't have them. But they're very simple changes, other than number 2, which is a whole addition, but that's also just kind of taken straight from the land use plan, Section 5, and also the joint meeting that you had with council.
Do those maps need legends?
They do, and I'm gonna work on those. In a future version of this, I'll have all of the maps updated and pretty. I think I might put them, I might put these maps on a separate page, it doesn't quite fit there.
What's on the CRTPO? Somebody's flipping acronyms.
CRTPO is the new Metropolitan Planning Organization. It stands for Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization.
Okay. Are they a government agency?
Um, they're more like a government coordination agency.
Like a COG or?
Yes, yes. It's called an MPO, it's a standard, like, regional agency, and it's consisted of Mecklenburg County and all the cities in it, Iredell County, and the towns in, the towns and cities and villages in Union County, but not the unincorporated areas.
Okay, thank you.
So 3 county region.
Tri-county.
Yeah. Okay, if there are no more other comments on this section, can we, can I move on? Let's see, alright. Okay, so finally, there were some updates I needed to make to the public priorities based on the new survey. And also, there was a section, somewhere, I think Section 4 also, the public input, and then priorities that you guys looked at the survey and chose these 10. These are exactly from, like, Section 4 or something, and so I just copied and pasted them from Section 4. Let me see. Yeah, I found it. Here, so Section 4.2, those 10 policies you came up with a few meetings ago are now in Section 1 again. That's all that is. Alright, that's the end of the executive summary, so if there are no more comments on that, then we can wrap it up.
I thought the executive looked pretty good compared to, you know, with pulling out everything, all the changes we'd met.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, very nice.
Great.
Alright.
Well, good job, everyone. Then if we're-
It had to take this for what, 2 years?
Right. That's awesome. So if we're, if we're at a point where, let's see, I think Section 7 and 8 are kind of like kind of wrap-up sections, if we're gonna submit this in August-ish, plus or minus a month, then we might have to get to those at the very end. We're probably gonna have a, we, well, we may have a new public input meeting, we haven't decided that yet. In that case, that information will go in the Section 8 appendix or appendix, and references are all gonna be slightly different, because I need to resource some of the material. So basically, this is the bulk of it that we just completed today, and the remainder of the land use plan, well, other than the comp plan, will be in one of the, like, either June or July meetings, and it's just gonna be, basically, just references and appendices.
Yeah.
Alright.
We're gonna get into now what the map?
Yeah, the future land use map, which is also available in the land use plan on page 38 or 36. No, no, either 38 or 40, depending on what version you have. But this is kind of the foundation of what, you know, if we're looking for a 2050 fully built-out Marvin, then ideally each lot will be built to its best use. But to do that, we need to determine the land uses today, and so we have the Village Center District, and you can see in light blue, whoever made this map had some idea that there could be some more of that boundary of Village Center, and then we have the ICDs, which are already established, and then we have the Commercial Conditional District, which was the 2 parcels at the corner of Bond, Grove, and Providence. And then in addition to this, we also have ETJs, but just to kind of streamline the discussion, I broke it up into 3 parts. It's really simple, because we don't have too many different land uses in Marvin, but to say, to break it up, I put Village Center, then ETJ, then Commercial District Parcels. So, without further ado, let's talk about the Village Center District Boundary. So I've put in a memo, a very thought-out, you know, description of, you know, what I think, you know, as just as a planner and as a person who's discussed this with both the planning board and the property owners. Of course, all the property owners are totally excited to be a part of the Village Center District, even those who are not in the current district boundary today. So of course, they would want to expand the district boundary, but then, of course, you have to balance, I understand that you have to balance the size of the district itself with what is appropriate for Marvin. So I've also included, you know, we've been talking about density and scale and what that would look like, so I've included some site plans of different boundary, like, alternatives, and what they would look like, what the Village Center zoning district would look like if extended to certain properties that are not in the, well, what it would look like in the current boundary, and then what it would look like if it were extended to certain boundaries that are not in the current boundary today, so that you can have an idea of, you know, is this what we want? Is this, is this okay? Like, is this maybe something we don't want? Just so that we're not looking at a map, we're looking at also like a, like, actual, you know, example built out. But of course, we don't have to talk about the draft zoning today, that's not on the table. Just the boundary. And, alright, so I do want to, I do want to make it clear that the boundary needs to include the whole parcels. So this kind of like half-boundary that we have on the current plan does not work. Like, this like half-let parcel and half-fincher parcel, like, it needs to include whole parcels. But that, the issue of not having commercial all the way to the back of Scott Led's property is addressed in the zoning regulation, that forces it to only have commercial in the front. In the same way, that regulation could be extended to, you know, other properties if they're allowed in the boundary.
How exactly, I mean, I'm trying to look, so hard to look at all this on a computer, so, in terms of Led's property, I mean, you've got, obviously, you've got, it backs up to metal arc, but- I mean, you've got, obviously you've got, it backs up to Metta Lark, but it, so, I mean, and I know that, I've seen your transitional density, uh, plans for us, but what about Rising Road? I mean, you've got, I know there might not necessarily be houses at that front portion there, but, I mean, you're gonna have commercial budding right up against another rural community, because-
Well, not in that case, because there is a cemetery in between them.
So like, so what, so I guess what I'm, what I'm helping, I'm seeing is the, the, I can't, is it three hundred feet? I can't remember what the, what the set of the, the commercial-
So for now, it's three hundred feet from the main roads. And, uh, so that means, yes, they would, uh, Scott Letts' property would have a, a new commercial building maybe in, in the gap between his house and the cemetery. But then there would be cemetery and then some more rural housing. And then the Rising Road neighborhood. So that's cemetery and that's rural housing.
Any commercial behind the cemetery?
No, no, there can't be any commercial here because that's, again, behind the three hundred foot, um, limit. There has to be only rural housing.
Okay, that, that's helpful. Um, but what about on the other side?
On the other side?
Yeah, so the one that's, uh, that is, uh, on Laxall Marvin Road.
Oh, that, right. Right, right. And that's also got to have housing in the back. I know that one's a little tight, but I think the combination of, uh, requiring them to keep a mature tree buffer as well as housing in the back of that neighborhood would, uh, satisfy, you know, the buffer. You got a, you got a tree buffer, then you got residential, and then commercial. Those are-
Right. How dense would the residential have to be in order to fit?
Um, so rural density, I'm taught, I'm thinking, um,
It should be a buy right next to it.
Right. Well, the, it's hard to say buy right because we're coming up with a new zoning district, but, um, the rural would be something like point seven-five lots per acre. So that's less than one lot per acre. And then, and then the next tier of density would be like one and a half, but the, that doesn't matter at that point because you're putting a rural density, uh, housing next to a rural density housing, and that's all you see from, from your perspective.
But then, then you're just moving that perspective over.
Right, but then the people who buy the rural-type housing within the Village Center know what they're buying into because they know that they're buying a house that's gonna be part of a, like a mixed-use district. Um, and I, I can, I can assure you, that's gonna be hot stuff. Uh, the young millennials are really gonna snatch that up.
Hey, could this, this also talk about the, the little brick house up there across from the church?
Uh, yes, that one, right, that would probably only be suitable as a commercial use. Um, hmm, and you gotta, that is right up against, uh, uh, Rising, a Rising Road, uh, property there.
Yeah.
Okay, good point. Um, then what to do about it? Uh, make it not allowed to be commercial because it is, uh, too close to rural?
But, but then you, you're, you're saying it's within three hundred feet, you know, then how can it not be?
Right.
There would have, there would have to be a transition between the commercial and the rural.
Uh, but there's definitely- Not enough room, there's a-
Is there a certain thing that can be grandfathered or no?
Um, yeah, anything can be grandfathered, just like in our, uh, normal R zoning. We grandfather a lot of things because we incorporated a long, a long time after a lot of things were built. Um, but the thing is, uh, only the current use can be grandfathered. So, um, if you're talking about, okay, the existing, the building exists, fine, keep it. Um, but then having a different use in it, having a commercial use, that commercial use cannot be grandfathered because that didn't exist before.
Gotcha.
It's, it's an unfortunate, it's an unfortunate placement for that guy.
Yeah.
And I know he's, he's-
Does anybody know what his, does anyone talk to him about his intentions?
Yeah, I've talked to him about his intentions. Um, he's, uh, he's very business-minded, I'll put it that way. And, uh, he'd be, he'd be very glad to have that house be a commercial use. Um, but I think, uh, I mean, he, he was talking about, he was talking about, uh, like, de-annexing if he doesn't get his way. That was, uh, something he discussed with me. Um, which is, uh, which is unfortunate. I mean, I don't think he'll be able to, but he's, uh-
So he's supposed to get paid. It sounds like he'd be fine with it being dropped to the ground by the state's body, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, you know, let's say that, you know, you're, based on this conversation, we don't allow him to do anything. And let's say the entire place is developed and you've got this wart sitting in there.
Yeah.
Do anything about it.
Well, but I mean, if you're looking at, I mean, if you're looking at the, the property along Laxall Marvin Road, and you're talking about developing homes on that back end to bump up against the Rising Road neighborhood, I mean, technically it could be part of that, you know, back-end area, even though it comes around.
Yeah.
Still be in line with, he could, I mean, he could stay residential and still, you know, maybe try and find a way to tie it into that, that piece.
Yeah, that's true.
I, I don't see how you do that. I, I don't know. At, at one point, well, maybe the biggest, you know, stumbling block-
Yeah, I mean, one thing I am hearing, and I'm not sure he's gonna be happy with this, but if you carved him out of the Village Center, then, uh, he'd basically be required to keep his current use. Um, it's just a res, it's just a house, and it would then just be a house. Um, that's not ideal, though. Um, just because it's all, I mean, you have, you consider its location with the Rising Road houses, but you also have to consider its location in the very middle of the Village Center District. That's kind of a missed opportunity there, if he's not in it.
Yeah, I'm sure that acreage, but it's probably too small to fit, to fit our requirements.
Yeah, it's only half an acre, actually. It could only, if it was a coffee shop, it could only just barely fit a parking lot in the back, and then that's it.
Well, I mean, I feel, isn't anyone, if I'm using orange, gonna wanna look at parking lot?
I mean, ideally, it's gonna be incorporated into, you know, the parcel on the corner somehow.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting idea. So instead of having a parking lot in the back, say, okay, no parking, but, uh, have, uh, maybe the parking be a little bit off to the side so that we can have a big tree buffer in the back. And then, uh, maybe, uh, Casey's people will be happy about that. I don't know. Does that drawing make sense? Yeah, parking here, buffer here.
Wait, sorry. Where, I'm, I'm actually in the document, so-
Oh, okay. Alright, I'll zoom out and then zoom back in.
Oh yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
So yeah, so again, so parking in the, the kind of church area that's not being used for anything except parking right now, actually. Um, just to maybe formalize that parking, put it closer to the front so we can have a tree buffer in the back. And then that store could be used as a coffee shop or something.
Yeah, but I mean, like, the other thing is, is that when we first started talking about this, we were talking about nothing else. Seeing that parking from Newtown.
Yeah, but in, in, I can see that in some cases that may not be possible. And, uh, in, also in, in just our, uh, Main Street, uh, like learnings, uh, street parking is actually good for, uh, reducing traffic, uh, speeds and, uh, making people, uh, just more aware of your surroundings. So maybe that's something that we use to our advantage in this case. Something to consider.
It, it's just, it's just hard to, um, this little thing is just such an outlier.
I know.
It's hard, it's hard to say, you know, oh, it's Letts' property can't be, you know, two different things, it has to be one. You, you can't have another set of law, like, uh, another set of rules and a logic for this little house.
Yeah, well, there, there are ways-
Now it either is or it isn't.
Right, um, well, when I said that Scott Letts' property, the whole thing has to be in the district, I meant that it all has to be zoned, mixed-use. Um, but then in, in, within the mixed-use zoning, you can have, uh, envelopes and, uh, like, different requirements. Um, that's, that's where I'm getting at. So if Scott's whole property, twenty-six acres, is in the mixed-use district, we can still say you can only have commercial within three hundred feet. And then we can say that, you know, parking has to be in the back whenever possible. Um, in, in, in the case of Owens's, uh, house, you can see that it is not possible. So that, that allows it to be in the front.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's tough, I just think it's tough because this, this district is, is surrounded by rural neighborhoods.
Yeah.
I mean, like, the only place in Marvin where there is a concentrated amount of rural neighborhoods.
Yeah, I agree. That is, that is tough, but it's, uh, it's a challenge. It's not a impediment, I think.
Well, you know me, Rohit, I'm gonna fight for the rural neighborhoods to make sure that, you know, our property, because, you know, we all moved there for very specific reasons, so we just have to make sure that the rules are the rules and-
Yeah, I understand that. And I also, you know, I wanted to show you, uh, just through these, uh, these site plans that the, uh, they, the draft zoning regulation has been iterated several times, um, based on your comments and other people's comments, and has been more and more favoring the, uh, the, you know, the privacy and the serenity of existing rural neighborhoods.
Yeah, I, I see that you've taken it into consideration and you're making efforts. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
I'm not saying it's gonna be easy, but-
No, I know.
I see that you're, I see that you're trying.
Thanks. I think this might be a good opportunity to, uh, start making a list of things we might want to, uh, you know, ask the property owners themselves. Um, because, you know, I've heard secondhand that Casey is in favor of the Village Center and that he would even, uh, be willing to invest in it. Um, if, even if it's right next to his neighborhood, um, in Fincher's property in, in that case. So, um, I understand, you know, the desire to protect all rural, you know, neighborhoods, but in this, maybe in this case, if he's actually fine with this arrangement, then maybe it's, uh, something that we write the district around and just let it, let it be.
I mean, he wants to buy a little brick house. Make, make things a lot easier.
Oh, I don't think Owens is gonna sell it, but, uh, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, well, I mean, when we come to that point, it would, um, I'd like to actually hear from Casey. I'd like to see some, I'd like to either see him or, I mean, like, hear from his mouth, um, you know.
In his last meeting we had, you know, he just sent someone to represent the entire development.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, she's my neighbor.
Oh, is that who that was?
Yes. So she works for him, and, uh, she also lives in Metta Lark.
Sure. Well, that's great. If we could have someone like that again, um, I mean, that's all I can hope for. And that's, that's exactly why I'm, uh, kind of, uh, advocating for a public input meeting regarding the, um, the boundary, but, uh, we gotta, we gotta start somewhere. Maybe in, uh, two or three months from now, we have a public input meeting about both the boundary and the zoning district. We can knock two birds out on one stone for the public input meeting.
Yeah, well, I think that need a draft of the design guidelines.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. In two to three months, we'll have all of that for, uh, for the public to, um, poke holes in.
Yeah, and, and Rohit, I'll just, I'll say this, like, I, I've seen your, all your initial drawings and your, I, I see where you're going, like, where your brain is going. But I think when, when you're a layman and you're looking at, um, you know, hand drawn cubes on a piece of paper, is that a two-story building? Is that like, what is that?
Oh, and I, I actually, I actually have a contract, uh, I have someone contracted to draw me some renderings that are more perspective, uh, renderings, uh, right now, actually. And she'll have them done by the next planning board meeting.
Okay, I, I'd love to see that because I think, I think, um, you jump to conclusions when you see, you know, certain things, um, drawn simply. Um, and it doesn't look like right now that we could get that type of, you know, small-town downtown feel. Um, it looks more like a planned community right now, uh, when I'm in, I'm, I'm thinking back in the DC area, like Reston. Anyone familiar with that area?
Uh, no.
Well, that's a good call. Get the rendering, uh, I think I'll help Paul.
Thanks.
Some of the things that we came away with, both from Newport, what's fun is I know, you know, we've, we've gone around the map plan concept, and that's got a bad connotation, and I came away with a new term. Let's see, what was it, idea?
The vision plan.
Oh.
Well, then we'll need a competition board.
The vision is on the map plan. Yeah. No, there, they, uh, as part of UNC Greensboro in their, I'm not sure if you're, you're a design department, but they have a group that will do renderings primarily for old existing buildings. You know, how to convert it, you know, make it look nice in downtown Laxall or whatever. But, you know, did, did you ever hear back from, uh, Jeff Emery, Rohit?
Um, I did. We, uh, we are talking through email and, uh, I'm just gonna get in touch with other towns that did something similar to what we're doing. And, uh, I mean, that, that's kind of been, uh, put on the back burner because of, uh, the virus, but, um, we do have, uh, next steps from, uh, the guy from Jeff, uh, Jeff Emery, who is, uh, I think for context, I don't think we told the planning board, we met the guy who is responsible for the Main Street, uh, like, uh, program in our, uh, area. And he said, well, you know, we're not, we, we have to have a Main Street for us to join the program. There are a lot of, uh, uh, successful things that the program can, uh, can do for us and things that we can follow to, you know, you know, develop a successful, uh, downtown district. And so that was very helpful.
Yeah, and, and that's what the, from Greensboro, maybe be able to do. So, so, vision drawings for what downtown building, you know, our Village Center buildings made.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think it's not, I mean, I don't think any of us are a lack of imagination or, um, you know, uh, kind of transforming the older buildings in our mind. I think that, I don't really have a concern with that. My concern is the majority of what I'm seeing on the plan right now is new buildings, they're, they're new buildings. So how do you, how do you kind of merge those two styles? Um, and build something new that looks old?
Yeah, so actually, just to, to answer that question, um, we got about ten or so recommendations of cities to go to, and, uh, I went to one for-
Was it?
Yeah, to, to do what, exactly what you're saying, which is to infill, uh, new buildings with old buildings and make them all look like they've been there. And, uh, one of the places that, uh, I went, the, well, the, the place that I went to before everything started closing down was Bluff in South Carolina. And, uh, I have a couple of photos I took with my drone. And this is like, uh, this is kind of like a main square here. And so they have a lot of, uh, of buildings that look like they were built with, uh, these like barn-style roofs. And, uh, balconies that kind of, the houses that kind of look like, uh, like farm, farmhouses, but this is all very, this is all new construction. I don't think we're gonna be doing anything like this, um, but the stuff in the back here and then this stuff right here, um, that's, that's, uh, that's really, uh, kind of inspirational. And, uh, let me find another photo. Uh, let's see. Here's one. This is, this is actually a commercial building on the main road, but you couldn't tell. I mean, you could tell if you could, you, you saw the, uh, like, the store name, but just like passing through, this kind of looks like a house, doesn't it? Anyhow.
Yes, Central Avenue has a couple like that as well in Sherman.
So, you know, that, that sort of stuff would be part of the, you know, design guidelines and stuff.
Yeah.
If we get there. Because when it's all done with, you know, ideally, you won't be able to differentiate between the existing structures and the new structures. between the existing structures and the new structures.
Yeah, exactly.
I think, I think our, um, is that all of these places that seem to be successful have these wide roads and some sort of centerpiece, whether it's a lawn, whether it's, you know, even, you know, the railroad tracks that go through downtown Waxahachie. They have some room, and we are so limited on, on...
Yeah, but we, we still have the opportunity to use the center church parcel as like a centerpiece of like a, a greenery, if we're not gonna do anything there like a museum. But then, you know, there's also the corner parcel, which, uh, now I'm including in my memo, the council's looking into financing, so that's looking like an option that they're, they're more likely to choose, uh, the original parcel. Um, but making that, the, the original, the original corner parcel that, uh, we're looking into as our Village Hall, um, the council's looking into financing now, so it looks like it's going to be, uh, a lot more likely that that parcel is the chosen parcel for the new Village Hall. Um, in that case, that could be made as the, the centerpiece that you're thinking of, you know? We've got our Village Hall, the farmer's market, and, uh, whatever uses are immediately around it, maybe like a park or something. But, um, there is an opportunity to make, uh, that, uh, like, uh, even though it's not in the middle of the district, to still make it like a centerpiece. You know you're here when you see this, uh, kind of, uh, like, place.
Right. So, um, so is, is, um, they in charge of anyone interested in leasing, doing a long-term lease for the property to come down?
Um, that's a discussion that is still ongoing. I'm not, I haven't, I, I really am not involved in that discussion enough to know how they're feeling about it, but all I know is that that is a continuing discussion. Sorry, I don't have anything better to say than that. Such a non-answer.
That's okay. It's such a huge, um, it's such a huge piece in whether or not the design goes further down the road.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You know what I mean? Like, there's such an interruption.
And, uh, the, one, one thing we are looking into is at least putting a sidewalk across the front of, uh, the church properties, so that they're at least physically connected by foot. Um, I know our, um, our downtown district looks cohesive when there's a sidewalk connecting both sides if they don't develop. Um, but I have heard their interest in putting, uh, like, a library or a museum in the, in the Grove area, but not like fully developing it into something that would, um, be like the other mixed-use, uh, properties.
Well, they were a little, maybe, all, after your...
Yeah, I, I think so too. We're, we're, we should really stick to the boundaries, and I only provided the, uh, the sketch plans as just like a, like a reference to the discussion of the boundary, because the overall discussion is about the future land use map in the end of the day.
So what exactly are we deciding or what?
Now, we don't have to decide this... We don't have to decide this today, but the, the, the conversation at hand is the continuation of the land use plan, the future land use map. Um, it, it's not got much to it, but it's got the boundary of the Village Center, the ETJ, um, and the, uh, future commercial parcel. So we just have to decide where, which properties are in and which properties are out. And like I said, I don't expect, like, I fully don't expect a decision today, because this is a big decision. So the, the short answer is, we're discussing the future land use map.
Yeah, and, and the, the conversation has always been, Bill, that goes from, you know, Marvin Road to Marvin School Road.
Mm-hmm.
And Rohit has, has put on out the possibility of expanding it.
Yeah. Just based on, uh, property owners that are highly interested in, uh, this and, uh, I think, you know, there's a way it could work, and so I'm proposing it. Um, and I've, so I've shown, you know, the purple, the purple, uh, I gotta flip my camera here. Um, in the, uh, boundary alternatives map, the purple is like the minimum district with the properties already, uh, chosen to be in it. And then the, like, small expansion is, are the two blue properties, and you could choose one or either or both. But, um, I think they'd be very viable candidates to be included, and I've included Y in my memo, but I can go over them again. And then there's the green expansion, which is, uh, like a medium expansion. And then, um, the large expansion, which is all of them plus Odell's and Phil, uh, Previs's property. Um, and like I said, I think all of them could work. And, um, I mean, I, I, I realize that there is a, uh, desire to keep it small, um, but, uh, with the low density, um, like, pres- prescription and even lower intensity of uses outside of the roundabouts. Um, I mean, I think any alternative could work, but, uh, I mean, the property owners really want it, so I've just, uh, put it to the table.
I, I do have a question about the large extension.
Yeah.
Um, that property, that, that property development's already been approved, so why is this lacking in the mix?
Um, I had, uh, I had, well, first of all, I had seen that this property was, uh, proposed to be developed kind of bigger, but it was denied. And then also, um, I had a representative, uh, developer come saying, you know, uh, this joint, uh, proposal, uh, it was on the table, and, uh, you know, if we're gonna do Village Center, uh, maybe we should put it back on the table. Um, and the other, you know, the other thing is that the previous property here was for sale, and the sale got dropped because, uh, it didn't perk well. Um, so that property would be pretty much sitting vacant right next to the Village Center, um, 'cause you can't, i- it wouldn't be financially feasible to extend sewer to it unless you did something, um, pretty significant there. And you can't do anything significant with the current zoning, so, um, the best use of the property would be to be in the Village Center. Um, but again, if you decide that it's not proper for the size of Village Center to be that big, uh, I completely understand that perspective as well.
Well, what I don't understand, though, is that, um, the sketch that I saw, well, A, I mean, if Mr. Odell is, if this is what he wants, he's changed his mind again. Um, and how does, how does having it be, I mean, I guess, it being in the, in the district, it just, it just gets you that centerpiece, that center, um, you know, housing that is, looks like it's like less than an acre. I don't know what, I don't exactly know how it translates, like, what kind of mixed-use housing that is.
Right.
But there's really no commercial in there, except, there's no commercial, it looks like.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can describe this. So I, I understand why the last, uh, proposal failed, and, uh, so I've, I've incorporated some things. First of all, the back edge has got a hundred-foot buffer and rural housing, so overall, three-quarters of an acre. Uh, or three-quarters units, so point seven-five units per lot. So it's less than one lot per acre. And then there's a middle zone with, uh, a little more suburban housing, and then the frontage are all commercial units. And, uh, I could totally foresee, uh, like, a zoning envelope that restricted the uses outside of the cul-de-sac to, uh, to be less intense. Um, but the reason why I come up with this is that, uh, you could put more offices here and Marvin residents would, uh, there are probably enough Marvin residents that work from home that could use, uh, make use of, uh, office space in the downtown area. Um, so the more, more offices, the merrier, really, but so, you got rural houses in the back, suburban houses in the middle, and then some commercial uses in the front. Um, and, uh, and then another, another intersection on Newtown Road. That's Marvin Road over here. And then another intersection could be added, so that there's no access needed on Meadowlark. And the way that is funded is because, uh, every, uh, this is another concept. Every additional parcel that's included in the Village Center will also be in the special taxing district, which is a twenty-cent roughly tax rate we're kind of narrowing down on. Um, and so that's...
So you could work for another little roundabout?
Right, right. So if, uh, say, Odell's and Previs's and Reason's property were in this taxing district, we could fund another roundabout that would, uh, subvert the need for any connections onto Meadowlark for a, a good traffic flow.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting. It's, it's interesting.
Yeah. It is really interesting. And I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even gone this far, but, uh, someone approached me saying, you know, uh, "I'm looking at this as the best use for these properties." And, uh, you know, with this, and with the zoning regulation, I think it's possible, again, to preserve, uh, rural atmosphere in Meadowlark by saying, you know, rural housing in the back and then having suburban housing and then commercial in the front. And also not having access on Meadowlark, and I think, uh, the Meadowlark residents would be a lot more, uh, uh, appeased by this proposal.
But the, the, the problem with that, then, you know, Meadowlark may be happy, but the people on the other side of Newtown Road, I doubt that they would.
Yeah, are they, um, that's technically Marvin over there, correct?
Yeah, across from Newtown Road, yeah, that's Marvin.
Yeah, and they've got, that, that's a horse, that's a little horse, I mean, they're little horse farms, like...
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, you know, what, you know, you, you're, we're talking about a creek here, and then, so...
Yeah.
If you stop poking, you know, allowing creek, then where does creek start?
Well, actually, I have a, uh, a pretty solid answer for that. And, and, and it kind of has to do with this map. In this map, you see these yellow dots, that's where, um, houses are. And I see candidates for, uh, being included in this district as parcels that are considered underdeveloped. And those parcels are, uh, gonna be parcels either without any housing or buildings on it or housing that is, uh, far less than one unit per acre. Like, Scott has one house on twenty-six acres, that would be considered underdeveloped. So when you look at that kind of, uh, like, as the, uh, the criteria for how far could you go, if you could go as far as you could, then this is the edge, because after this, you have about a one-acre per lot, like, houses on Newtown Road. And then down here, you also have houses on kind of appropriately-sized lots, I wouldn't call those underdeveloped. So this is, this large extension is kind of the, the extent of what would be considered underdeveloped and thus ripe for redevelopment.
But, I've got a problem with, I've got a problem with the creek.
Mm-hmm.
But then, at the other end of, of Village Center, you've got the property on Marvin School.
Yeah.
Which, which stands okay with, because what do you do with it?
Right, that, that's really, that's kind of really the same concept, though, if you think about it. His, uh, three, Ravi's, uh, three-acre parcel is so very suitable for anything that could be next to a Village Hall, like, uh, lunch restaurant or a cafe or, uh, like, an office that would be appropriate, like, uh, like a real estate or a lawyer to be next to a Village Hall. Um, it's, it's really shooting ourselves in the foot to not include this property. And I heard it was included in the past.
Sort of like, it's sort of like the little brick house that what...
Yeah, yeah, that, that one.
Yeah.
Um, hey, Dan, can I suggest, and I don't think we're gonna get to every U on to this, but I feel like we started just a little late in the meeting, Rohit. Uh, I feel like you're kind of got a clue, a stopping point, and maybe wait for this rendering and maybe...
Sure.
Boiling up a little bit on the technology we're using, so that, I just don't feel like we're getting a, a lot of bang right now.
Yeah.
I may be wrong, but...
Yeah, I think we're making a lot of progress, but we're at a point where it's clear that we're not gonna be making this decision today. And like I said, that's perfectly fine, because, you know, like, we got to the end of chapter five, and the very next page is the future land use map, so that's why we're here right now. But, uh, if, you know, if you guys need some time to think about it, you wanna, you wanna talk to the property owner some more? Sorry, go ahead.
Can I give a next, you can get it off the ground. I mean, it's, it's got everybody thinking, but now, I think we're now getting into some real, some of this. Get an initial ten-thousand-foot view, I think we got it. I'd love to see the rendering, I'd love to kind of chew on this a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I do, I don't, I think, I think we're, we're getting down to some smaller issues that aren't gonna get decided or voted on or brought up tonight.
Yeah.
Could, could I ask one quick question of, of Rohit?
Sure.
Before we quit, how long the conversation is the ETJ?
Um, the ETJ is less, like, less than ten minutes discussion.
How about we at least discuss that? What do you think, Mark?
Well, I thought I suggested, so you can get on to the other agenda item.
Mm-hmm.
It works.
Sure, I mean, the agenda is just, this is the only item remaining, but the, of course, the other parts of the future land use map, that's what is remaining. But you want to, so you want to table this to the end of the meeting? Do you want to table this, uh, like, just, uh, the discussion of Village Center boundary to the end and then get back to it?
Well, that, it's, it's almost not far now.
Yeah, okay. So do you want to get to the ETJ now? Because I think we need to talk about the ETJ at this meeting, and then maybe just table the rest of the discussion entirely?
Yeah, that's, that's...
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we set it, why don't we set it nine fifteen hard stop, and let's wrap it up?
Okay.
Yeah.
That seems like it's possible.
It's just like ten minutes, that gives us twenty, so that's typically for us, ten equals twenty, so...
Well, I was gonna say less than five minutes, but then I said ten, so five equals ten, now ten equals twenty, and that's how it goes. Yeah.
If you happen to get those renderings prior to the next meeting, could you go ahead and send those over? If, if you're, if you're comfortable with it?
Um, sure, I'll send them all at the same time if I get them. And, uh, I put a deadline of May fourth on that, so it's possible I'll have them before the next meeting is. And I mean, it's, it's, it's very likely I'll have it by the next meeting, well before it, I can send it to you.
Okay, this is hard to turn on something that you're not really sure what it's gonna look like.
Oh, yeah, I know, and that's why, that's why I've asked, uh, this person to draw some renderings. It will, I, I've seen some drafts, and they are, they're a lot better than what I've been drawing, that's for sure.
Okay, ETJ.
Okay, so this is a really quick one. I proposed the ETJ to the county, and he just had, um, he had one thing to add, which is that he wanted to suggest that the church that's kind of in between, uh, Marvin Gardens, it's kind of shuffled in, in between there, should be added to our ETJ as well. And, uh, wow, I can't find the map. Where is it? Um, do you guys have the ETJ map? Like, my, uh, stuff's kind of... I put my stuff all over the place, and I can't find the map right now. Okay, I'll just show it to you on, uh, the zoning map here, 'cause it's really easy to visualize. So I'm gonna zoom out a bit, so that we get our bearings. This is Providence Road here, and this is Newtown. And, uh, that's, that purple, uh, um, area is Marvin Gardens. So you see by the thick border that the, this, this property that's kind of in, embraced within Marvin Gardens, but on the same side of Newtown Road, is not in Marvin. And so the county, uh, planning director suggested that, you know, originally, we were supposed to only add drone apples, like, areas that were completely surrounded by Marvin. But this one parcel, which is not completely surrounded by Marvin, is a perfect candidate to be added into our ETJ in the case that they do end up selling to someone who wants to develop, then we can regulate that development if the person they sell to is not the developer of Marvin Gardens. So, uh, the subject today, to add to the future land use map, is just this, uh, in, in addition of, uh, those two parcels which make up that abandoned church. That be agreeable to you guys?
That's, that was the one I'd asked you about before, how some we couldn't get.
Yeah, and that was because the guidance I heard then was that, uh, we can only include, uh, parcels that are completely surrounded by Marvin, but since that one parcel is not completely surrounded by Marvin, that's why I didn't include it. And then the planning director says, "Oh, well, you know, you, you can include it, that's, that, that makes a lot of sense." So now I'm back saying, uh, I have one small addition to the ETJ, which is to add that, uh, that parcel. Is that okay?
Rohit?
Yeah.
Rohit, well, I mean, there's a, there's a parcel, obviously, immediately to the right of that one, that seems to have similar...
Yeah, but that, that is an existing neighborhood, and, uh, well, we could add this whole area to our ETJ as well. Actually, would, would, would not, uh, mind proposing that as well. It makes sense, actually. Do you want me to propose all of that? I can propose it to him, and then he can come back with his, uh, you know, his suggestions.
Is it just one neighborhood, or is it part of the neighborhood?
This is one neighborhood entirely, and then there are a couple of just lone houses on Newtown Road. It's called Weddington Forest, and it's on Shimmeron Lane. Um, and there are about like fifteen houses or so, maybe less than that, ten houses.
So, an ET, ETJ would not, like, they wouldn't necessarily be paying Marvin taxes, but we could regulate...
We can regulate redevelopment of, say, those three... We can regulate redevelopment of, say, those three houses in case they were gonna redevelop. Uh, if they were in our ETJ and, uh, any one of these Shimmeron Lane residents could be, uh, the planning board member. That's pretty much it. But that's actually a pretty good addition. I mean, if, uh, if they're in our ETJ, they might attend the planning board meetings. I mean, I get a lot of calls from them about Marvin Gardens development anyway, so. And they're saying, oh, no, you know, I'm not in Marvin, but, um, since Marvin Gardens is in Marvin, we have this issue and that issue. And, uh, yeah, so we got a lot of calls from them, actually.
So, let's see, and we, we are still now just discussing with the county about what they're gonna allow us to ask for?
Yeah, and they, the, the county planning director was the one that proposed to me. He said, you know, I see that this is not on the map, do you wanna go ahead and add it? And so I can come back to him and say, yeah, I would like to add that. Um, and then they also discussed, hey, while we're at it, can we add this area as well? And I can just get his opinion on it and then he can say yeah or no.
Uh-huh, and then you've got the one over on Providence Road and then you've got stuff over there behind the chimneys, I guess?
Oh, yeah, the overall, uh, plan, uh, for the ETJ includes all of the other things. Uh, this whole chimneys area and all the donut holes in here and here, and then that property there.
Uh-huh.
And this does not require, um, that those neighborhoods or those parks are to agree?
Yeah, they don't have to say anything, it's just the county commissioners that have to agree to this. But that's just as well because the ETJ almost has no impact at all on existing neighborhoods because we don't regulate the development or zoning of, you know, things that are already developed, right? It's only when things redeveloped that ETJ matters.
I mean, I can say, ask for it, do it add?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Do we need a motion for that or are we...
Um, I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna just give consensus to propose to the planning director that we add, you know, these parcels that are between Newtown Road and Weddington Chase and Marvin Gardens, that, uh, that is just something that I can talk to the planning director about.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Agreed. Then once you are need, then, then who submits it to the county council?
Um, yeah, I would just submit it to the planning department and then the planning director will submit it to the county commission for, uh, for review and their decision.
Okay.
I imagine it's a few months out. Because even the county is having some canceled meetings due to coronavirus, so...
Yeah.
Okay, well, since I've got the consensus on that, I will just, uh, go ahead and do that and, uh, we can move on to the, uh... Well, actually, we're gonna table the rest of this, uh, item, isn't it?
I think so. I think we were just going to ETJ.
Yeah, sure.
It's back to Barbie on any, uh, action items?
Are you gonna table the, uh, the other land use?
Yeah, they're gonna table, they're gonna table the entire, uh, number six. Um, and we're just gonna bring the whole thing back at the next meeting.
But how can they table it if they've already discussed it?
Um...
I mean, you've already discussed, the only thing you haven't discussed in number six is C. Everything else is discussed, but you're not actually tabling number six, you're just tabling number C, which is the other land use, which is number three in his report, that what I understand.
That's correct, and then we will, um, we'll bring back up for further discussion, item A, at a, at a future meeting.
Okay, so we're gonna bring back A to the, to a future meeting, okay. Okay, all right, question on it. All right, I will update the chair and vice-chair information on the website and, and the contact list and email an updated list to all members. Rowan will add, uh, count, to council work session meeting, the land use planned, top plan timeline with revision. Rowan will send the email explaining the changes needed for the ordinances. And Rowan will send the Village Center District boundary renderings to the planning board, um, when, if they're available before the next meeting. Did I miss anything?
Don't think so.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
And just, just so that I'm clear, just so that I'm clear, we're going to, I'll add five and six. You're going to, um, discuss number three that was tabled, um, in item number six. And then you're going to rediscuss A, which is, uh, the Village Center District boundaries at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, so I guess next is, uh, comment.
Uh, anybody wish to go?
John, I'd just like to thank you for serving as chair and congratulations on another year in Kelly. Uh, congratulations and good luck.
Thanks. Good luck. Does that mean you're gonna be trouble, Michael Vell?
Never, I haven't been trouble yet.
Could I ask a question, which, it might be a little late for this question, but how did we, this meeting, virtually, under our rules?
Ah, yes, what's the difference, what's the difference between the canceled three-twenty-four meeting and today's meeting? Well, in between then and now, the governor issued a state of emergency. And in a state of emergency, all meetings can be virtual except for quasi-judicial meetings.
Very good, that...
Yeah.
And just one comment, one, I thought it went very well, congratulations to everybody. Uh, it seems to me that the one thing we had a little trouble with was perhaps voting. And I'm, I'm thinking there's probably better, more efficient way to do that, like, maybe a little button we can push where we raise our hand, yes or no?
I actually thought about, I thought about putting it in the chat.
We can't do that because I'm not, I don't have audio here, all I have is the cell phone. So I can't see any button that's being pressed when someone tells me.
Oh, yeah.
That option's not, not gonna, it's not gonna work because we don't have that capability yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Something to think about, it, it was clearly the one area where we had our most difficulty communicating, right? We're all talking over each other, so...
Matt, Matt, what, I, I need to, a better, uh, comment list of everybody and just read everybody's name and then you pop in and say, yes or no?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, John, you had it right early on, we could've done it that way, you call out a name, they answer, we'd be done with it, it's fine.
Okay.
Cause I mean, the, our inability to get that right probably took up three or four of the two hours and forty-one minutes, so we wanna get that fixed.
Okay.
Could we also, could we also get, um, for those of us who are actually on video, could we, could we do some more screen sharing?
Um, yeah, you can do screen sharing, uh, there's a button here, uh, there's like...
Yeah, no, I, I know how to screen share, my question is, could you do more screen sharing instead of, like, showing us your, with your, like...
Oh, yeah, I should've been doing that this whole time, actually, oh my goodness, sorry.
I'm having to like, I'm having to like minimize the WebEx so that I can actually see my documents.
Yeah.
So if we, if you could share your screen and we can all follow along on the same thing, we can go back.
Gotcha.
Or we could Zoom, but, you know, I think Zoom is...
No, I, I do have screen share and the other, I do, I used it for the Marvin Gardens subdivision, but then I completely forgot about it in the land use plan. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, it's just, it's just the problem with WebEx is that you can't, I haven't figured out how to have documents up at the same time to WebEx. And if anyone knows how to do that, please, uh, educate me, cause I, I don't normally use this, I use Zoom, so...
Mm-hmm.
Dual monitors.
Dual monitors is one thing.
Dual monitors is how I do it.
I'm on like a thirteen-inch Mac.
Is there no way to minimize the WebEx? Cause that's what I'm doing, I've got one, I've got one monitor here, but I could minimize, I could minimize the WebEx by hitting the minus button at the top.
Yeah, it just, it, for me, it just disappears completely, so that I have to go searching for it, so, it's fine. But if, if you could just share your screen, that would be great.
That's actually what I should've been doing. Like, for example, right, right now, I could've, uh, I could've just been sharing the land use plan like, like this.
Yeah, and then we can still see it somewhere at the top, that's perfect.
All right, next time I'll do that.
We're gonna rock.
Next time I will do that.
Do what?
Are we ready for motion, to wrap it up, or are we still got items?
Did you, uh, anybody else have any? Only question for Barbie, I take it we have nobody else, uh, on the vacant position yet, since you've, uh, re-advertised?
No, I have not gotten anything from anybody yet.
Our reputation precedes us. All right, I'm ready for a vote. Go ahead, Michael.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Who in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, people, hopefully we can get together next month instead of this, but, uh...
Don't count on it.
Well, that's right.
The street turn will help if we can.